I want to begin the meeting. But I know the last time I talked, she said this.
You all here right now?
Right.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Robert Tornford from the CCMW. He'll be here to speak to everyone tonight to get the message out to you. And he'll explain to you what's going to happen. I'm going to turn the meeting right over to Robert. Thank you all very much. Do you have any questions? Right away, if you're ready. I appreciate that. That is...
Thank you, Mary. Can everybody hear me okay? Good. Applause. Okay. First of all, thank you for hosting us tonight. I hope we can answer your questions and we can tell you a little bit about what we're doing. Back on March 7th of this year, we, along with your sewer department and the Bellbar Sewer Department, began to get a whole ton of phone calls about a sewer line leaking back on Trap Rocks driveway, Deep Timber driveway, and the rear property of Beaver Brook Motors. Your sewer department, ourselves, and Bellbar Sewer Department all responded, and unfortunately, I lost it. It was quite a fight. Um, we had great...
I just sat in the airport. Actually, I feel weird.
I said, "Unfortunately, we lost." The bizarre fight was making. Um, we have, as part of the regional system, each municipality has a local collection system, as you're aware. Rondome, in your case, owns the pipes that go from your house down the street to the site of the former sewer treatment plant, which is where... I'm trying to do this close. Okay. So, the borough of Rondome owns a sewer system that serves all the homes and businesses in the town. They collect the sewer, bring it to... Formerly, it was a sewer treatment plant many years ago. Now, they bring it to our system, where we pick it up through our regional collection system, transmit the sewage to Camden City, where our treatment plant is. A kind of related to, we're like the interstate highway system. There's very limited access. There's no homes connected to us. We're just the main trunk line. We pick it up each town along the way. Nobody else can get over there often. Just a few exits along the way. We have a pump station in Rondome, which is right next to your Public Works complex. That pumps from there through about 6,500 feet of 42-inch pipe to where it discharges into a gravity sewer in Dunbar. The pump station pumps through it. The line is under pressure, just like the water main could be. It operates at about 40 pounds per square inch. That's a 40-foot diameter pipeline, which is pretty good because it's taller than its tail. Think, the yard's thickness is 36 inches. It's three and a half feet in diameter on the inside. So, it's good. Uh, it's a force main, like I said, because it pumps from the pump uphill to the next high spot, where it then runs by gravity for a couple of miles until it got to the bottom of the hill and came down even more. Then, there's another pump station, and it pumps up the hill, and it keeps going through that process till eventually it's the treatment plant in Camden. Unfortunately, as I said, on March 7th, we found a pipe leaking in the rear of Trap Rocks driveway and Beaver Brook Motors. We worked through the night, and through the weekend, in fact, around the clock ourselves, and emergency contracting. We have a container, J. Fletcher Framework, who's already experiencing this kind of work. And we met in our forces. We worked around the clock, and by Saturday morning, we had a temporary clamp put on the pipe. Um, as we exposed the pipe, we found that there's a crack in the pipe. To cause it to crack at this point in time, uh, we were assuming it's a manufacturing defect, but we will not know for sure, so we get the pipe out of the ground and can have an effect. The defective pipe is still in the ground right now with the clamp. Uh, during the course of that work, we brought several large 20,000-gallon storage tanks out and pumped the leaking sewage into those tanks, and then shuttled from there with tractor-trail and trucks to our treatment plant in Camden so that it would be no sewer overflow during those four or five days till we got the pump break clamp. We were able to do that because it's only leaking out of the crack. It's about 12 inches long in the pipe, on the circumference of the pipe, just about dead center in the length of pipe. The only way to repair that pipe, according to not only our thoughts on our contractors, but we brought the original pipe manufacturing, and we brought our design engineering, and everybody in that agency agrees there is no way to repair this particular type of pipe with that kind of crack. The section of pipe must be removed and replaced. No different than if we were removing and replacing the section of pipe in your house. It had a hole in it, except unfortunately, it's much larger and weighs about a ton, so it's much heavier as well. The particular pipe is made of concrete. It's called pre-stressed concrete solid pipe. Um, not that that means a whole lot to you, but it's because it's that kind of a pipe, you can't tap into it and put a bypass around it. It's just physically impossible to do. Because the length of the pipe, like I said, is about 6,500 feet. That's almost a mile on the head. It's not practical to put pumps in and run hoses from one end to the other. We would tie up the Blackos Pike, the New Jersey Trent Pike, and every other street when we clean. We're trying to do that, and you can only imagine how many hoses it would take to equal the flow going through a 42-inch pipe. I mean, you look at your fire hoses down the street. They run four or five-inch hoses from the fire hydrant to the truck. We're talking a 42-inch pipe. You would need dozens and dozens of parallel hoses, each one 6,000 feet long. It's just not feasible or practical. It really just can't be done. Unfortunately, the only way to repair it is to shut the pump station off, cut the section of pipe down, quickly drop the next replacement section of pipe in, and restart. That unfortunately means the pump station will overflow all shutters. We're not happy about that. We don't like that. But there is no practical alternative because of the nature of the beast. Uh, what we are doing is taking every reasonable step that both we, our contractors, and our consultants can think of to minimize the amount of overflow. Uh, we will be doing the work starting at midnight. It's presently scheduled from Monday the 29th to begin at midnight, when the flow is absolutely below us, because hopefully, you'll all be home and sleeping, you're not using water and running water. Uh, so we will purposely do it in the middle of the night for that very reason. We will have the week prior to that. We will re-estimate the pipe. We will do all the preparation work we can in advance. We will take every bolt out, because it's been underground since 1987-ish. So, we will take every bolt out at an early time and put a new one in, so that they come out fast. We won't have to fight rusted bolts that have been underground for the last 25 years. We will have all the new pipe right there where it began. For every piece of equipment we have in the job, we will have at least one backup piece of equipment there, so that the solid has to cut it. We'll have, you know, spare solids there. The back door has a big hole. There will be a second back door there, so that there should be nothing conceivable that will go wrong to stop us from doing this very quickly. Uh, like I said, unfortunately, the pump station will overflow during that time here. We have nine pump stations upstream up here. This line basically follows the Blackos Pike path beginning in Lakeland, all the way down. The stuff will reel too much. There are pump stations that we own. And one, two, three of them were also attached. Stratford, Clementon, and two more were also attached. All nine of them, since we own them, we can control them. We will bring our personnel in. They normally run automatically, and man those stations for the duration of this, and in fact, shut them off and let them back everything up right to the point where they're about to overflow. And then manually run those pumps as slow as possible just to match the incoming flow. Storing as much flow in those nine pump stations upstream that will never get here, and will never have the chance to overflow. And they won't be restarted until we take this back to the ground and run the pump station to restore. Uh, we had met with representatives of New Jersey Department of Fire and Protection and submitted our proposed plan to them over a month ago. We submitted it to your borough officials, just to keep them in the loop as to what's going on. We submitted and met with all these folks as well to the county health department, and they're all aware of it. And nobody likes it, including ourselves, like I said. But everybody acknowledges there is no other reasonable alternative to do it. So, as long as we have everything to minimize the amount of that time, and therefore minimizing that, the overflow, unfortunately, is going to happen. It won't be the end of the world. It's not the first time there's ever sewer overflowing. It won't be the last. But like I said, I'm not trying to make light of it. You don't like it, but there is no practical alternative. In order to mitigate the overflow, we know from experience, because the pump station has overflowed previously, there was a overflow during Hurricane Irene when it got knocked out by local power failures. And that would actually overflow significantly more because it's in the middle of, not only the middle of the winter all week, but in the middle of ice storm. The flow is at peak capacity, not in the middle of the night after several dry days. Uh, we know unfortunately from experience, without a curve, it flooded through our public works garage. In order to prevent that, we have met with your public works folks and your council and come up with a plan, whereas we're going to have our contractor a week before we start the project, dig in the burden burn around your garage, so that the flow won't go through it. In the meantime, your public works department's already up there in the upper floors with caution, just in case, or they've constructed a burn, or have our contractor pull up the version burn, which will be built permanently and stay in place, which will not really help. For this incident, but any future heavy... We see get hundred-year storms every other year now, so it would be a permanent improvement that Rondome will benefit from. Uh, in addition to that, we plan to sandbag your garage as well, just in case the burn doesn't work. We will sandbag it to prevent damage as well. So, we're going to put belts and suspenders going to prevent any proper damage. The present approved method of cleaning up after the sewer's filled, for any incident, is to flush it with fresh water, which we will do. Pick up any visible debris, which we have. A lot of people aren't really lined up the next morning. Basically, our entire maintenance department has been told that that's their chore. And they're used, not that they're used to it, but they know what needs to be done. And then we spread line. The same line that we use on our lawn, that they use to stretch the ball field behind us, as a... It's not a disinfectant per se, but raises the pH, which therefore does it... Or lowers the pH, I'm sorry. Which therefore acts as a disinfectant, because any bacteria can't grow in low pH. Uh, we are not allowed by law to put any type of chlorine or HPH, which used to be 20 years ago, the way you dealt with those things. We would sprinkle swimming pool chlorine on top of it, chlorinated, and you're done with it. By law, you can't do that anymore, because that causes more damage than the sewage does. Other than being a potential annoyance, obviously, if you're not fighting it, which you hope, it did not, nobody will be. The really only risk from the sewage is that it increases oxygen in a body of water. And if there's too much, it could compete with the fish or whatever, the oxygen. That should not be an issue, because like I said, unfortunately, we know this pump station has overflowed in the past. It's significantly higher now to overflow and did not cause such a problem. So, we don't expect it to happen here either. I think that touched on everything we planned, and maybe you must have a lot of questions, which is really the second day for why I'm here. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll take them more time. I'll do my best to answer. If I don't know the answer, we'll get it to you somehow. Yes, Mary?
The question is, we were getting where the people were afraid to live in that area that they could get waste in their homes.
No. That will not happen. And again, we know that for a fact, because the pump station has overflowed in the past.
Right.
And it actually overflowed at a greater rate, because it was in the middle of a hurricane than in the middle of the night on a dry day. What we will be doing between now and the date of it, in order to, we haven't done it yet, because we don't... We don't know the firm date. We're scheduled for the 29th. That's weather dependent. If we don't have three days of dry weather before, we will reschedule, because we want the flow to be the minimum. We don't want to be carrying any leftover rainwater from the sewers.
And the other question, the residents, from where you're back, was on, it's running after pay for this, and we said no.
Absolutely not. There should be no cost also at Rondome. The CCMW is just carrying the cost of repair. We do have insurance for this type of thing, so hopefully, that we don't, while we pay it, we expect to get reimbursed. There are actually lanes adjuster, an access line, the whole length adjuster, and an engineer that they've assigned with to determine fall off, already working on, and working with us every step of the way as well. There are, the immediate residents around the pump station, they've seen their overflow before. However, we will be knocking on their doors and speaking with them once we formalize the date. When I say formalize, when we see a weather forecast the week before, that, you know, looks like it's going to really be dry. The only thing that one has in mind, or we're going to suggest that they take their car out of the driveway, just so that they don't have to drive through any puddles to get to work in the morning, if for some reason, the work isn't done. But other than that, there should be no inconvenience. Nobody needs to be evacuated or anything like that. Yes, sir?
Where is the pumping station?
Pumping station is at the foot of Broad... Uh-uh. Right at the foot of Broadway, on the other side of the former railroad track, by tension line, probably impressive. On the back corner.
That's next to the old sore place.
Yes. Yeah, it's along the property of the old sore place. You have any questions, sir?
So, two points. How long do you expect the actual replacing time for this pipe? And what's going to happen to the fresh water that you flushed out? Where is that going to end up?
Ultimately, all of the flow will end up going into Big Timber Creek. That's the, happens to be the bottom of the word that the storm sewer system takes it to and the overland travel, any rainwater intended to. We're hoping that the actual overflow will be no more than four to six hours. We expect the whole operation to be eight to 10 hours between, you know, backfilling, replacing up with things like that. But for a time, we actually shut the pumps off to restart it. We're hoping that it'll be four to six hours, barring any unforeseen circumstances. We're planning on replacing one length of pipe, which is 20 feet long. We have five lengths of pipe. We'll be on the job, just in case. They will be there. I hope, don't take it forward back to the yard when we're done. But we're trying to plan every contingency, so that there'll be nothing to slow us down if there's a surprise. Yes, Mary? The worst case would be, well, let me say this. We go to cut the pipe. We'll cut up the solids on both sides. Um, lift the cut section out, and then have to pull the two pieces out of the male and female Allen's figure joints. The worst case would be if we pull them out, and the piece next to it, for some reason, breaks. That's why we have four extra lengths of pipe. It just goes to the next one. I don't expect that to happen. It... That's our worst case. We're preparing for it, but we honestly do not expect that to happen, because this is a couple of cracks. It's not a piece of pipe that's wired and is just falling apart, like it's rusty and falling apart, and the one next to it might be as well. It has a hairline crack in it, which would indicate it should come apart in time.
You said it to the leader, it was caused by manufacturing defect. So, how long did this last?
Pipe was installed around '85, '86. Still, it's probably a C new one that's put in. It shuttled by up to 50 to 100 years. It only outlasted around 25. Uh, we're speculating that it's a manufacturing defect. We don't know that, and we will not know that until we get the pipe out of the ground and look on the inside and see what happened. And we will probably have to send it out for, you know, forensic analysis or forensic engineering, actual help, as well, for failure. And we will do that. Yes, Mary?
Okay. My concern is that our sewer system, we have to turn with some ways to something that can protect our label with the Gem's landfill. And the stuff is very reactive. There was a big move on comp down in the west 10 or 11 years ago. And I remember they decided to go ahead, and I believe they flushed the waste, and that's carried it towards sewer system. So, with this spill that's occurring, is that toxic and harmful to us?
No. Let me explain why. What you're saying is mostly correct. I'm going to just fine tune a little bit what you said. There is no flow from Gem's landfill that comes through this system, nor was there ever. What there is, Gem's landfill is a super fun site. Uh, the landfill by EK many, many years ago was tapped to the bottom of the pipeline, and played top on top. Everything's trapped in between. The landfill leachage, which is the liquid between the bottom liner and the top liner, is not coming through the pipe, nor has it ever. And that's what mostly the hysteria 10, 12 years ago was. People mistakenly thought that's what was coming through. It is not. What comes through the pipe is the groundwater 100 feet below the landfill. It is being pumped up, goes through a redundant double filtration system on-site, and then goes into the pipe. The water coming out of that has been tested three times a week ever since it started, six, seven years ago. Uh, and it has, before it goes through the treatment system, has never, in all of that testing, exceeded the drinking water standard for radiation. What you buy in a bottle of water is warranted than what comes out of this groundwater. However, it still goes through a double redundant, what we insisted they build at the time, where the treatment plant to filter the radiation for 100% of the capacity, and then a second one downstream of that, again, for 100% capacity. So, one failed, the other will catch it. And then it goes into the sewer system. The water going into the first treatment plant has always been below the drinking water standard that might have other conventional sources. And from a radiation point of view, you could drink it and live healthy. Like I said, bottled water has more radiation in it than what goes through that system. So, yes, it does flow through here. You are absolutely correct. But there never has been, and we, it's tested now by gems themselves, because that way they pay for it, by outside certified, like three times a week, and we test it once a week. So, it's tested four times a week. And it's never once in seven years of testing been above a drinking water standard. Because we share your concerns, Mark. Yes, sir?
One quick question. Uh, the concrete pipe that was there, are they using the same material again, or has in 25 years, they come up with something better to replace it?
The same material will still be the same today. Uh, it's, there's probably hundreds of thousands of miles of this pipe in the ground in this country. At the time, it was a state-of-the-art pipe in the mid-'80s when the system was designed. It's still being used today, and hundreds and hundreds of miles put in every day throughout the country, primarily in water mains, though, not sewer lines, because, well, we don't think that's the cause here for what they have found, because it's concrete that's susceptible to sulfide corrosion if it was in a sewer line where there was any airspace above it. And therefore, you could have the top of the pipe corrode and weaken. We don't believe that's the case here, because this is at the bottom of the hill, going uphill. It's 3,000 feet from the pump station, so there's another 3,500 feet of pipe going uphill. So, that has to be full all the time. There's no way. And it's 40 feet higher where it discharges. So, that pipe has to be full all the time, so there can't be defects. And we don't believe it's internal corrosion. That's the reason we're suspecting manufacturing defect, because there's also no physical sign of damage on the outside, like, you know... I don't want to blame, if somebody put a pole through or another contractor digging here with a back door, there's no sign of physical damage. And we can't envision how it's going 40 feet uphill, and at the bottom of the hill, it can't be full. But it is put in today. However, for the repair, or that's for the repair, we're putting ductile iron to that 20 feet, because you can work with it much faster, and it's more forgiving to be banging around and move. So, because time is of the essence, getting this pipe in the ground, we had two adapters custom-made, which is part of life of the life from March to now, because we had time, because of the temporary claim. We had two custom-made adapters to convert from a concrete pipe to ductile iron pipe. And we will put ductile iron in, because you can work much faster with that, and therefore, probably cut the half the time of repair, which was important for us. It costs more to do that, obviously, but it cut the time here.
Does this iron have the same pipe expectancy as that original concrete?
Yes. But the ductile iron pipe, which is what we use today, in fact, we're expanding our system down to, like, Waterford, Chislerhurst, and Winslow down that way now, and we'll put a ductile iron pipe in. It has a ceramic lining on the inside to protect it from any type of corrosion that's applied on there. And that's today's state of the art. For years from now, that'll probably be obsolete like anything else, but that's today's state of the art coating. And we had, uh, five sections fabricated for this job. We got this 42-inch pipe. You don't get it at Home Depot, Home Depot has it in stock. Uh, we had a choice of getting some pipe that was laying in the yard at the manufacturer, leftover, and we know the job. But because we had time, we said, "No, we won't bring a new pipe." Not one of us. We don't know how, why it was there, or how long it was there. We got all ready the pipe dated with ceramic coating. Yes, Mary? Just keep them up. You have a question? Okay. Yes, sir?
Is this a force main impossible, or do you have the flow stopped? Are putting camera in, or are any manhole in above it? Or are you just putting camera in?
The only way to do that would be to do exactly what we're doing now. Turn the pump station off. And there are access points we can get to it to do that, yes. But they would only be for a dire urgency where it was blocked or something, and you can't figure out what's going on, and you have no other choice, because again, you have to shut the pump station off to do that because of flow stall. The camera would be underwater and see nothing.
Well, is there a sway of the farm? Or is the pipe cracked a lot?
It's in a straight runner pipe. We, when we get the, look at the inside, we'll see if there's some unusual hydraulic quality closet. That's what I said. We're speculating it's a defect. But until we get the pipe out of the ground and can really look inside it, we won't know. Yes?
How long has that pipe been cracked?
We started getting calls around lunchtime on Thursday, like I said. I don't think it was cracked long before that, because like I said, it's under pressure. It's under 40 pounds of pressure. It's just like a water main leaking in the street. Once it starts leaking, the pressure shatter up the ground. Now, it didn't come out gushing, because it was only a hairline crack. But it's still coming out under 40 pounds of pressure. So, I don't think it was cracked very long. Uh, the first calls came from Beaver Brook Motors, because it was running in their back door and at the front. So, they would have noticed that, I think, if it'd been running much longer. Yes, sir? There's always an environmental concern when you have a sewer. I'd be lying to you to say that. They will be minimal, because it's going to be, we know, and we'll be able to see where it runs through. We have three pallets of lime that we will have brought out ahead of time to disinfect after we manually clean up anything we see afterwards. Two of the residents or anything like that, there's absolutely no health concern or environmental impact that way. There would be a potential that you might smell something. You know, if they're walking into the bathroom here, if somebody's used a toilet. It might not smell, but it's not unhealthy. There is no health hazard to anybody, unless, like I said, unless there's plenty of drinking every day. And I don't think anybody's going to... I hope we're not on the bad news. Yes, Mary? Uh, we put down a combination depending on how much is needed. Whether it's either with a law sprouter, just like we would at home, or by hand, sprinkling it out. We have both walkie-horse sprayers, the hand cranks, and a lot of coffee cups that we scoop it out and shake. Anywhere that we can tell that was touched by the sewage will get a layer of lime. There's only one residential property that we know of There's only one residential property that we know of that gets a little bit up to the side roof, which is the quarter house, having corner from us. They've had it before. They know what happens, and you will talk to them ahead of time as well. I don't think it's necessary, but we're gonna offer it makes them feel better, also save them by their house for them as well. They like it, if you're more happy to do it. And of course, we'll pick them up when they're done as well.
So you put the lime down and then stayed for flushing?
We put it down and it stayed. We put it down and it stays there for next time for rain, you know, different than the lime you would put down in, you know, if you were putting it down in your yard or that they put down in the ball field right behind you. Yes, sir?
He said to search twenty-nine, what were the break rates? It'd be like the week before?
Yes.
But where's the actual pipe broke at?
All the way in the very, very back fence line of Beaverbrook Motors property, owned their property. We have it easy through the rear of their property, parallel to the old train line that the public service line runs down. It's not on the public service line, it's inside the Beaverbrook fence on their property. Right at their gate, you actually had to take the gate down between them and Trap Rocks Drive. It's broken right there.
Does anyone in CCM know any way that a local line, maybe it's a local authority or anything like that?
Yeah, we have all of our main homes depending on what type they are on a regular schedule. Is it walk, daily or weekly? No. For most, if it was a major leak or any kind of major leak, the public lines is one before we ever work. Usually, you know, somebody sees it, he starts getting phone calls almost immediately from. Yes?
I have this other question.
No questions? Good to hear.
Is there any way that this, a problem like this could affect our community?
No. Your drinking water doesn't come from any source anywhere near us. Correct. We're nowhere near any water mains, even if the back operator, we're totally, you know, just throw up and go wild, but there's no water main anywhere near us. Yes, sir?
That's correct. If you're having overflow, that's correct. There's, say, just back, a lot of backflow. How long will it take to get back to that where it's supposed to be going, or anything that's in here, is it just fine?
Based on the times it's overflowed previously, where the overflow was a much greater volume, you never saw it, it just got immediately carried away. And then some people related it to unfortunately years ago when we had a pipe break inside the pump station's loss attachment. And that overflowed for three days. That was a thirty-six inch by thirty-six inch tee that broke inside the station, Jen due to a manufacturing arrow pipe. That was ultimately determined by metal or just the pipe manufacturer not paying for that. But that overflowed for three days because it broke entirely within the pump station and all the motors and everything else went underwater. And it took us a while to get them all dried out and cleaned out, as well as get the pipe repaired obviously, but we couldn't restart it because all the equipment was downed by water.
It doesn't hurt any of the fish or anything that's in here? It picks up the turtles or something?
It shouldn't, no.
You know that for a fact?
No, that's why I said it shouldn't. I didn't say it's wrong, I said it shouldn't.
Exactly.
That's based on past experience. Yes, ma'am?
Am I thinking this right? It's gonna be on the other side of the turnpike where Beaverbrook is?
The pipe construction work will be on the other side of the turnpike where Beaverbrook is. The overflow will be at the other end of this street, all the way where it ends on the other side of the overall. Yes, ma'am?
Any water restrictions during that period of time?
No, one of the things we've sat and talked with was both DNI P and the county health department, was whether we would go on and put out the waters, asking people to restrict their water usage. We kinda considered that was not gonna do very much good because we're doing the work after midnight anyway where most people are already not using water. So that's the reason we're not doing it. Any other questions? Again, I thank you for the opportunity to give me an answer to your questions tonight. Hopefully it'll alleviate some of your fears and concerns. And if you have further questions, cast them to your council or your administrator, we would be more than happy to get the answers to them to pass out to you as well. Thank you.
For those of you who aren't familiar, my name is Rich Wright, I'm the borough administrator. And I just wanted to go over a couple of operational issues on our side. Just to let you know, we know which manholes blow when we have a problem like this, so they're actually going to remove those manhole covers. So once the date is turned up, we will have barricades with a police officer presence on both ends of the street, Preston and Peaney and Broner and Ramler, during the repair period. And there, you know, no unauthorized access would be allowed in that area due to both the water flowing and the fact that there will be the covers on those manholes. There's, my understanding is there's about seven households that are directly impacted by the way that this flow happened the last time. Those residents all have someone come and knock on your door and they will be notified in the mail once we have the date turned up of exactly what's happened. So basically, they will have more of an impact than someone that's inconvenienced that can't go through that street when their pass security calendar goes out. As far as operational issues, our emergency management team met shortly after this event took place. Everyone has a plan in place, fire, EMS, police, public works, and sewer department. So everyone already has a pre-planned how they will operate during this event, so as far as emergencies and things of that nature. Our main way of, other than those direct households, our main way to communicate will be our website. We also have the ability to have a special event on our phone line, which I'm going to work with the clerk and our phone company to make sure that we can do that for information regarding this. If there's an emergency related to this, it's unforeseen, someone had mentioned something about water, which we don't see that being a factor, that'll go through three, six, ten or areas through the emergency broadcast system. The local people up there is a problem. Again, the police officers and public clerks, those who would knock on the doors and inform them that way. So there's a difference between people directly impacted and then those just in the community that would be impacted by, by what was taking place. Basically, that covered it for us. So if there's any questions, again, I'm always pushing the website. We do have questions and comments, if you have access to the internet, if you can send that through, it comes to me on the website. And also our phone number, you know, over there to take your calls from. Thank you. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry. It's www.runnymede nj.org.